Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call our meeting to order. And it is the meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council for March 12th, 2025. I think today is the day that the Girl Scouts was founded, but I'm not sure. Okay, so it's my sister's birthday. And I'm calling this meeting to order, and I'm going to ask Councilmember Nelson to lead us in the pledge. Roll call, please. Councilmember Middleton?
Present.
Councilmember Nelson?
Present.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Here.
Vice Mayor Lopez Taft?
Here.
And Mayor Kapinski Costa? Present. I just wanted to start out the meeting by saying we did have a closed session earlier. I have nothing to report thus far, but our session is continued until after this open session, and we are going back into closed session at the end of the open session. And then I'll be out to report at the end of that closed session of what happened, if anything. Is that fit? Is that fit? Good? Is it good? Okay, thanks. Video statement, please.
This meeting of the Citrus Heights City Council is live and recorded with closed captioning. It is cable cast on Metro Cable Channel 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast and DirecTV U-verse cable systems. It is also livestreamed at citrusheights.net. Tonight's meeting replays on Monday, March 17th, at 9:00 a.m. on Metro Cable Channel 14. This meeting can also be viewed on the city's YouTube channel.
And the next item is approval of agenda.
Move approval?
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous aye. Next agenda item, please.
Our next item is a presentation number four, is a presentation by High School Student Council Report.
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Kapinski Costa, Vice Mayor Lopez Taft, and council members. I am junior lead for student government, John Peyton Bonilla.
And I am the rally MC and senior lead, Vanessa Saldana Chavez.
We are honored to be here on behalf of Mesa Verde High School. We are excited to share to you about our campus.
Mesa Verde is a diverse campus with 865 students. Students on our campus speak many different languages, including Pashto, Spanish, Russian, Ukrainian, Tagalog, Mandarin, and English. We are having a thriving ELD program.
Last year, we opened our new stadium in October, and our front office and classrooms received much-needed upgrades. Our football team played hard and made the playoffs. The Citrus Heights community is invited to Friday Night Lights starting next fall. We want to make Mesa the place to go on Friday nights to enjoy the football atmosphere and to cheer on our local athletes.
We have 12 different clubs on campus and many support programs to help our students succeed. One students learn to be leaders on campus through Suave, Students with a Voice. They are trained and coached to implement listening circles and student surveys, which become student actions on campus. Currently, the team is working on creating strong school connections with students and teachers. They are focused on reinforcing school spirit, community service, and academic excellence.
Last year, our principal, Ms. Peterson, connected with a group called IYT, Improve Your Tomorrow. This club offers support all day and after school. Young men are invited to participate through team building, video gaming, and food. Along the way, their grades begin to increase and their dreams about their future take on a more hopeful view. Currently, IYT is working with 50 students, and all the brothers were eligible to play sports in the fall. Additionally, Mesa added GEMS, similar to IYT but for young women. We've also connected with UC Davis and a program called SEZ. This nonprofit organization sends writing coaches to our English classes. Their goal is to help our students produce spoken word poetry, personal memoirs, and creative writing.
Our College and Career Center opened last year. Ms. Kim provides a wide variety of support for students seeking career paths in the military, with trades, and with college opportunities. Many of our juniors and seniors are dual-enrolled at ARC and are currently receiving college credit and high school credit. This partnership has been outstanding for our students. Last year, we had 50 trades and career professionals arrive on Career Day. We are doing it again on April 9th, and we would love to invite you all to present your expertise.
Our AD Travis Miller built a strong relationship with the Optimist Club. We are the proud recipients of the $60,000 grant. The grant challenges our athletes to work closely with playmakers to provide an inclusive basketball camp for students with special needs. This year, we were able to run our full football season, soccer season, and our upcoming track season in our brand-new stadium. Please join us for our homecoming game next year. We want to pack the stands with people cheering for Mesa Verde. Currently, our spring sports are revving up. Many students tried out for our softball, golf, tennis, baseball, and track. I am proud to announce as a member of the baseball team that our team is now nine and one with an eight-game win streak. Last year, Mesa sent many volunteers to Citrus Heights Easter egg hunt. This year, we plan to do the same. Our key club volunteered at the Kiwanis Crab Feed, which funny thing is, I actually met the mayor at the crab feed. I worked her table. It's nice to see you again. We also send our volunteers to the Rio del Lago Marathon and the Community Spaghetti Feed. Mesa's Community Service Class provides yard work for the elderly and support for the Carriage Elementary right next to us. Our students at Mesa Verde are generous and kind. In fact, we had 29 students give blood last year, and we are having another blood drive on April 2nd from 8:00 to 1:00. Our goal this year is 30 blood donors. If you can bear with us longer, we have a few more thoughts to share.
This year, we offered freshmen a ton of support. Lean Crew seniors teamed up with freshmen, and they provided cocoa and cramb, board game night, face painting, and point break. Point break is a program that invites freshmen, students, to feel vulnerable and feel connected. Many avid seniors provided support and coaching throughout the day's journey.
Our music department is thriving. They performed in multiple jazz festivals around Sacramento, such as the Sac State Winter Festival, Rio Americano Festival, and the Tea Garden Jazz Festival. One of our senior band students, Claire Seymour, made Allstate on double bass for the third year in a row and the CMEA Capital Section Honor Band for the second year in a row. Mesa's theater pathway is thriving. Students are learning how to set, design, direct, act, and run the lighting. Our spring show is called She Kills Monsters. Tickets are still for sale for showing this weekend.
Our student government class is preparing for prom on April 26th at the Blue Goose. Our theme is Vegas. When the sun decides to show up, we also have plans for an egg hunt, day-on-the-green carnival, leprechaun visits, visual and performing arts awards, guitar/jazz recitals, senior awards, and graduation at our very own stadium. We are having a great year at Mesa. Finally, our social studies department is having a civitas pathway. This program connects local government partnerships and curriculum focused on civic duty. Our counseling department runs Cafecito con las Consejeras for Spanish-speaking parents and Parent University for parents who want to learn more about financial aid.
Finally, thank you so much for your time. We are honored to represent our school and to share with you what Mesa has to offer.
All I could say is wow. Don't go too far. We're gonna take a little picture of all you guys. I want to ask our council for comments first, starting with Councilmember Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. It is really, really neat to hear all of the programs that you guys have and all of the activities that are going on. I think that our Mesa students are very lucky to be attending Mesa with all of that, and great job presenting it tonight.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Schaefer?
Very impressive, both of you. Really well done. You know, usually people are pretty nervous. Excuse me. Pretty nervous standing up there, but you look pretty really comfortable. So, good job and great to hear all the good things you guys are working on.
Thank you. Wow, just amazing, amazing programs that you guys are doing, some of which I am well aware of because my husband goes over and does the garden there. My son goes to Carriage. And my oldest boy will be at Mesa next year. So, super excited to see all the work that you're doing and all the options that the students have there. Thank you guys so much for being here and telling us all about it.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mayor. Thank you both for coming today. You know, what I found most impressive was your confidence and your poise in your presentation, but also the fact that you gave us such a deep understanding of what's going on at Mesa. I took lots of notes because I'm very interested in what goes on in our high schools. And I love that Improve Your Tomorrow and the GEMS program are at your program. I know the folks that run that, and I know they run very, very good programs. So, I'm excited to tell them, hey, I found out you're at our high school. Also, I am involved with your college and career programs through our SerOptimus program. We're gonna be there April 1st, serving some of your students. So, thank you for validating that it is wonderful at Mesa. So, thank you for your presentation today.
Thank you, ma'am.
And I want to thank you, and I echo what everybody else said about your wonderful performance tonight, if you call it a performance. It's nice for you to share with the community what's going on over there. I will tell you that part of our future agenda in the city is to encourage civic participation with the schools. And so, you can look forward in the part that you had for the civic involvement of being reached out to, to participate in what we have for our high school students. It sounds like Mesa has really got a lot of stuff going on for you, and it's such a great melting pot of a different variety of students. And it sounds like I wish I was in high school again. No, I don't. I don't really. Anyway, thank you so much for coming. We'd like to take a little group photo, if you don't mind. And I believe our city clerk has a little goody bag for you. Well, that was terrific. What's next?
Our next presentation, number five, is proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming March 2025 as National Women's History Month.
Well, this is a terrific month, and for this proclamation, I'm gonna ask Councilmember Middleton to read the proclamation. You know, in anticipation of this meeting, I Googled famous women in Citrus Heights. And Councilmember Middleton is among the famous women. She's our first black woman council member and our first black woman mayor. So, I'd like her to read the proclamation, please. And to honor the honorees, we have Ladies in White and we have the Citrus Heights Women's Club. So, we have two honorees.
Thank you, Mayor. First, we have the two honorees, and I'd like to invite them to come to the podium, please, so I can read this proclamation. It would be the former Ladies in White, Sandy Thane, Carol Alexander, Janie McBride, and Vee Hall, and also all of the members from the Citrus Heights Women's Club. So, if you all could come to the podium, please, so that we can honor and recognize you. Check out that picture. Wow. Oh, man. That's amazing. So, this is the proclamation of the City of Citrus Heights proclaiming March 2025 as National Women's History Month. Whereas the theme for National Women's History Month is Moving Forward Together, Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. This theme celebrates the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship, and leadership. Women's History Month is a celebration of women's contributions to history, culture, and society, and has been observed annually in the month of March in the United States since 1987. Generations of women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic, economic, political, and social achievements that have left a profound and positive impact on society and contributed to the growth and strength of Citrus Heights. And an integral part of Citrus Heights' history are the Ladies in White, who provided volunteer emergency response services throughout the area from 1951 to 1986. The Ladies in White pioneered the concept of medical response teams working in conjunction with local fire departments and provided an organizational model that other communities would soon follow. The Ladies in White generously donated their time, talent, and training to aid and assist those in peril. And the City of Citrus Heights Women's Club is commemorating its 50th anniversary as an organization committed to serving the Citrus Heights community through charitable efforts that support education, civic engagement, community spirit, and leadership. Among its notable events are the Taste of Citrus Heights and Veterans Appreciation Picnic. And now, therefore, it be resolved that the City Council of the City of Citrus Heights does hereby recognize the month of March 2025 as Women's History Month and encourages its residents to learn more about the rich and diverse history of women through available programs, ceremonies, and educational activities. Well done, ladies.
Would somebody like to speak? Do we have the Ladies in White? Would you like to say anything? Tell us? You know, I used to know Doreen Sherlock, and so she was a friend before she passed. And so, I appreciate you coming. So, tell the audience a little bit about Ladies in White. Janie, where are you?
I joined the Ladies in White in 1963, and that makes me pretty old, but that's okay. I'm here to thank you for noticing what we have done in the past. I am writing a book at this point regarding the Ladies in White. My husband was a firefighter for 25 years. And so, now, I would like to say thank you to all of you for noticing what we have done in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. You're part of our history, and so that's why it's important that we recognize you this month.
Yes, thank you.
And how about the Ladies Women's Club? Tell us about your 50th anniversary.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes, we want to thank you for recognizing us. We've been here. Well, we celebrate 50 years in June, and we do a lot. We've done things with seniors, and children, and hospitals, and veterans, and the police, and the fire department. And we're looking for another, I don't know, about 50 years, but a lot of years. But we'd like to encourage people to come in and see what we do. And you could look us up on citrusheightswomenclub.com. And we just appreciate, and I want to really appreciate you guys. If I was, okay, I was like 10 years old when you started, I would have been one of you guys. I think what you do is incredible, and the high school students are the future of this country. I'm so excited. So, thank you. So, come.
When do you meet? When does the Women's?
We meet at the Sylvan Community Center noon on the first Wednesday of the month. And we do other projects on other Wednesdays.
So, people could just show up first Wednesday at noon?
At noon, and...
At Sylvan Community Center.
And we're looking for projects, and we're looking for new assisted lemmings and retirement homes to do some of our projects with, so.
You can go visit Gertrude.
Well, she's my baby. You know that.
I know. And I think we have a SerOptimist out there. Do we? Is there a SerOptimist? Mary Jane, did we have one?
Come on up. Come forward. Put in a plug for SerOptimists.
SerOptimist of Citrus Heights is over 50 years old in Citrus Heights. Jane is one of our members. We'd like to see you more often. I know you're busy here. We know where to find you. We have a lot of programs for women and girls in particular. That's what SerOptimist stands for, improving the lives and empowering women and girls. Live Your Dream is one of the biggest ones that we have each year, where we find recipients that we can gift monetary to make their lives better, there and their children especially. We participate with the Citrus Heights and the Citrus Heights Police Department for their PALS program, and also the holiday gift giving. Each year, it seems to have a different name, so forgive me if I don't have that correct. We have coming up on April 1st, Dream Be It, that our wonderful vice mayor chairs for us and puts together so beautifully. And it's reaching out to the, this year, I believe, we have the seniors and some juniors at Mesa Verde that will be young ladies, that we will be, excuse me, showing career paths and having examples of women that have overcome all kinds of unimaginable diversity and hardships. But they have turned out to be doctors and nurses and firemen, firewomen. And it's one of our favorite programs. We also have fundraisers. Fall Into Fashion is every year we have at North Rich Country Club. We also work cooperatively with the Kiwanis of Citrus Heights and with their crab feed. We do most of the raffles and have fun selling tickets. And we meet every first, excuse me, every second and fourth Wednesday at North Rich Country Club at noon. You can always just let Jane, our vice mayor, know. She'll put you on the list so that we can have you join us and see what we're all about. Everybody's welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anyone want to add or say anything before we have our photo?
No, I think I've said enough.
You want to add anything?
I do want to just thank the women's clubs and organizations in our city. We have a very rich history of women being involved in their community, uplifting youth, and being meaningful contributors to our particular city. So, I just hats off to those of you who've served, continue to inspire others to serve. So, thank you so much for your dedication.
I will echo that sentiment. I appreciate you all for being here tonight, but also for what you do on a continual basis. Community truly takes all kinds, and it's great to see that we have such a strong presence in women leadership in our city. So, thank you.
And I want to echo what everybody else said, but I also wanted just a little demo. Okay, so this is, wait, this is, okay, this is a little thing. This is a nice little lady that lives in Lakeview Village that makes these. So, this is, you hang it around your neck, and you can put your phone in here or your glasses. And so, I'm going to, I brought her today, a bunch of purple yarn. And she's got some arthritis in her knuckles, but she's promised to make the women's club a whole bunch of purple ones. And so, when they're ready, she's gonna call me. Meanwhile, for the Ladies in White, I have white ones. So, I'll give you these when we come down, but I just wanted to explain what it was. This woman is an incredible woman. She's from Britain. She has a picture of the Queen in her living room, and so, you know her? Hazel? I mean, she's pretty cool. You guys are all amazing. We have the ladies who are history and the ladies who are making history. And so, that's kind of, this is good. Okay, let's have picture time.
I'm sorry, Jane. I forgot Jane is one of our members, but she's so busy. We hardly see her.
I haven't come to a meeting. Don't tell...
We're history, Carol.
You're making history, being history.
Yeah.
This is a good meeting. Our next item, please.
Our next item is presentation number six, presentation by Citrus Heights Arts.
Hello, everyone. So, let's see what we're starting with. Somebody hit play. Okay. So, I am Gigi Raferd. I'm here on behalf of Citrus Heights Arts. We have some exciting updates about our efforts to bring the vibrant arts to Citrus Heights. We want arts to be accessible and in our city, right? So, public art is more than decoration. It's a catalyst for community engagement and economic growth and civic pride. So, you see, this is part of what we did last year for Art Beat. Art Beat 2025 will be coming on the 25th of October. This event will be a dynamic celebration of music, performance, and visual arts designed to activate our public spaces and unite the people of our community. So, think of it as a rhythm pulsing throughout the city, inviting people in our surrounding areas to come and check out what we're doing. So, we do have a call for artists going on, right? Because we're going to be doing the, let's go to it, hold on, Art in City Hall. That's one of the projects we are working on and one of our most anticipated projects at that. This regional initiative will bring together talented artists from across the area to showcase their work in a space where the, where we are, you know, a city hall, so where decisions about our future are made, and it should reflect our culture, diversity, and the talent of our community, right? So, by transforming these walls into a gallery or integrating art into our everyday civic life, ensuring creativity has a visible presence in our city. So, that is one of our things, and there's more to go with that. Hold on. One of our largest sponsors, so I got to find that page. So, none of this would be possible without the generous support of our community, the City of Citrus Heights, and we are thrilled to announce our first and second large sponsors. Our first large sponsor for art in City Hall is Republic Services at $5,000. Our next sponsor for our whole year of projects is Councilmember Portia Middleton at over $8,000 to sponsor the arts in our city. We are a hub of innovation. We just, we have to bring it out, right? So, we're actively seeking volunteers to help us bring these events to life, whether you're an artist, organizer, or someone who believes in the power of community. We need your passion, and we need hands, we need hands-on, okay? Citrus Heights is on the precipice of becoming a beacon of arts and culture, and what we don't realize is that Citrus Heights holds a unique position, right? We are directly bordering Roseville, Antelope. We touch North Highlands, Foothill Farms, Orangeville, Fair Oaks, and Carmichael. So, we're in the middle. We're not on the grid. We're not Sacramento. We are right here in the middle of all of these cities, and that is a very important thing because our city serves as a crossroads for commerce, culture, and community life. So, everyone passes through Citrus Heights at some point, and we have a responsibility to make it a destination, not just a stop along the way. We want people to come here, spend their money, so we can get our tax dollars, okay? Art is a powerful tool, y'all, right, for shaping that identity and attracting visitors. So, as we look forward, and I have to say this, y'all have seen me somewhere saying this, as we look forward towards redevelopment of Sunrise Mall, we have an incredible opportunity because we have all of these cities around us who are going to pass right through where we are, okay? And we can do that. So, our goal is to weave creativity into the community's future, creating more than just a, creating a more vibrant, engaging, and welcoming environment for all residents and visitors. So, like I said, the call to action is, I need you guys, if you know people who want to volunteer, let them know, we're taking volunteers. We need a couple of board members. We're also going to be in the Big Day of Giving. This is our third year in the Big Day of Giving. We're going to have a special event at the Grotto, which is not in Citrus Heights. We will have something in Citrus Heights as well, but it's the Grotto and it's Natalie Price's restaurant, and as y'all all know, she is from Citrus Heights. So, we will be supporting her in that initiative. She has been very instrumental in bringing all good things to our community. So, that is really it for me. You got any questions? And don't make them hard.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Before I pass. When you do your, when you do your Art in City Hall, will those art pieces be for sale?
Yes, but they will not, they can't pull them off the wall until the end of the quarter.
End of the, okay.
And the city will be partnering with us in the during. We have strict compliance.
Because I noticed that some of the walls in the lobby, as I go to Monday with the mayor and I look at the, we have naked walls. We need some stuff up there.
Yes.
So, maybe we could vote on stuff or...
Oh, you will be. You're a part of the process.
Where I could buy a piece and donate it to this wall or, you know?
Yeah. We will be during, though, so there are some requirements for it.
Okay.
Because it is something that we want everyone to enjoy, so we do have that. You all will be a part of that process, and so will Citrus Heights Arts and our board members.
And is Art Beat in October going to be at Birdcage like it was last year?
Yes.
Okay, because that was a great opportunity. And one other question before I pass it along. Do you have any performing arts in your art, in your organization?
Absolutely.
Okay, so when you do those, be sure to let us know. Okay.
Definitely. We are working with the B Street Theater. They have partnered with us. The Sacramento Field Harmonic has partnered with Art Beat to bring us a lot of dynamic performances.
Oh, you had a gal last year that played, that was really good, the harp, the harp lady that...
Yes, she was awesome, yes.
We need a wine bar that would go with it, so we could sit.
No, no, we will, we will have all of that. It's going to be very awesome. We will also have a event where we're fundraising outside of the city. I don't know if anybody's sure of the Jacqueline, but I'm a founding member, and they have offered to have an event, provide everything we need, and we're going to buy the proceeds from the ticket, and it's because it's more regional. We have to diversify our experience in Citrus Heights because, like I said, we touch almost every city around us. We have a prime opportunity here. So, of course, you all will be invited. You don't have to buy a ticket, but you will have to sponsor. But that, you know, but you're always welcome to be in anything that we do. Any more questions?
Any questions? I can see Councilmember Schaefer is burning questions.
I am burn, I am, I'm just...
Okay.
No, no. Gigi, thank you for doing this. This is, you know, what you keyed in on is, in Citrus Heights, we need to generate an experience. That's what people are going to be coming to Citrus Heights for. They're coming to Citrus Heights to experience our city, and that's part of what you're doing. So, thank you.
Thank you. I want to say thank you to you all for being a part of Citrus Heights Arts and always supporting us, whether it be grants or just your presence. I want to thank, say thank you to Councilmember Middleton, Middleton, who happens to be my daughter, for donating so much money to help the arts because she realizes the importance of the arts. No matter where we move, that's military personnel. The only thing we could take with us was our art. So, we had art galleries. She grew up with art galleries. So, art is just such an important part of culture, expressing everyone's, you know, diversity. I want to thank the chief for sitting right there. Did you get my picture? Okay, good. So, I want to thank the chief because he's supporting me because I generally don't come to the mic, but he has been very supportive. Thank you all.
And Councilmember Nelson, I know you were jumping around, too.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you, and like what Tim said, I appreciate how you said you want to encourage people to see Citrus Heights as a destination and not just to pass through, since we are, I think, really the center of the region.
We are.
Like you said, yeah.
Absolutely.
And just echoing your sentiment about arts in general, they're so important for all of us, good for our brains, you know, our brain health and just our overall happiness. So, thank you for everything you do.
Thank you. Mayor Jane, you got any questions?
I don't have any questions, but I have a couple of comments.
Good.
I wanted to thank you, Gigi, for, you know, carrying the torch on this. You know, your enthusiasm is really catching. I love that you have a program with Art Beat. I've loved attending and seeing all the artists you've gathered. I have a particular bias toward acrylic artists, and so I'm glad that you showcased one of the walls with the acrylic artists that you had. But growing up with art in my, in my family, I know the value of art. Having art personally, seeing art, as Councilmember Nelson said, it's good for your brain, and many studies have proven it traverses even when you have learning disabilities and things like that. Everyone can appreciate art, and so thank you for making our city a focal point for art.
Thank you. Councilmember Middleton?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to give a little bit of texture and color. Ha ha. Because Gigi has been, my mom has been doing this for a long time, and the programming that she puts together, it is free and open to the public. She never charges. It all started, gosh, almost 10 years ago with Cookies with Santa, and it was because growing up, we, we had a large family. We couldn't afford to get pictures with Santa Claus, and she wanted to make sure that people had that opportunity in our community, and it just grew from there. And every year you see this tenacious spirit and this energy that comes through that I, I don't know how she manages to keep all this stuff together and to make the connections that she's made to take these ideas and turn them into something that is really putting a spotlight on our city, and that's why I invest so heavily into it because I tell folks all the time, you put your time and your energy, your talent, your treasures into things that you really and truly believe in, and I believe in the arts. I believe in the arts in Citrus Heights. From the moment that she worked with, you know, Kathy Lynn Carpenter from the Peabody to make sure we got murals on the walls and to, and the Birdcage Shopping Center. It's incredible, the work that you do and the drive and just the love that you bring to Citrus Heights. I don't say that because you're my mom. I say that because you are an incredible human being who makes this stuff happen. Thank you so much for doing that work.
And I have a Santa suit if you need to give out pictures of Santa.
I'll be calling you. Thank you all.
Thank you, Gigi. Next item, please.
Next item is public comment, and if you wish to address the city council during the meeting, please fill out a speaker sheet and give it to myself, the city clerk. When you are called upon to speak, step forward to the podium and state your name for the record. Speakers are limited to five minutes each, and the mayor has the discretion to adjust the allotted time. There is a countdown display that will flash red at the end of the allotted time. Consistent with the Brown Act, the council is prohibited from engaging in a discussion or taking action on any item not appearing on the agenda.
Thank you. How many more speaker sheets do I have? One more? Okay, well, I'm not going to limit it tonight because we only have three, but, and I know that Mr. Alan Utzig, I'm going to call you first because I know you're quick and easy. By way of introduction, Mr. Utzig is my, he's a future item on the consent calendar. He is my appointee to the planning commission.
I want to thank the mayor for that appointment. I hope I can do the job as well as the past people have. I have volunteered in Citrus Heights for many different organizations. I was a tenured member of the Citrus Heights Fire Department and worked with the Ladies in White on several different calls during that time. I still volunteer with two different railroads, this California State Railroad Museum and the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad, plus some few other organizations. So, I'm looking forward to the challenge of the planning commission and hope I can make you all proud of me. Thank you.
I'm sure we're going to be proud of you, Al. Thank you. I'll mention that Al is also a member of Area 10. Next, I have Mr. Shelton.
My name is David B. Shelton. I want to talk about voting and how I think you should make your voting decision. Voting should be viewed in the same way as firing your boss at work. You can hire and fire those who make and pass laws you agree with or disagree with. The mayor is at the City Hall each Monday from 9:00 a.m. till noon. I didn't vote for her since I am in Councilmember Tom Schaefer's district, so I voted for Tim. Each Monday is an extension of public comments to present your views and hear the mayor's viewpoint in real two-way communication. I'm looking forward to our next mayor in 2026, not only her knowledge, but why she is willing to give her time to public service. But first, a kudo to Amy Van. She properly keeps everything in this meeting running smoothly and recently trained a new city clerk who did the job as professionally as Amy. So, the City of Rancho Cordova hired her newly-trained assistant to work for them. Tonight's topic is voting, and you should vote for the individual regardless of the party. My party is the Libertarian Party. Our current Vice President J.D. Vance is in my party, but there are not many in my party that are elected to public service. My opinion is that Vice President J.D. Vance will be the successful replacement for President of the United States in November 2028 elections. Too often, we as a group vote only for people in our own party again and again when they agree with us or disagree with us or whatever our viewpoint is. We complain, but we never fire them. By that, I mean, we don't vote for them. You can't really fire them. You just don't vote for them, and they don't have a job. I believe the silent majority comes, it is now our time to be called the vocal majority. Let me repeat that. I believe that the silent majority sees it is now our time to be the vocal majority. California cost of living is too high. Housing is too costly for many people, and the homeless problem persists. But again, Citrus Heights is a leader with an issue solution such as the current Sunrise Mall discussions. Our homelessness situation or solution is in a trial program for us. These individuals typically need help. Refuse help, and the public shouts that no one cares about them. Citrus Heights does. We are spending money to assist those who want to assist themselves, but if not, then supervised living is in, and not being rotated in and out of jail is out. I will be wearing green. I will not be wearing green on Monday, March 20, March 24th, when I'm talking to the mayor in our private public session. Will see anyone from the audience there? I hope so, but it's a real adventure to talk to the mayor in such a private setting. She makes good coffee, too.
And I brought you a muffin last time. Our next speaker, our final speaker, is Thomas Spencer.
Good evening. My name is Thomas Spencer. I'm a constituent, and I thought I'd be speaking at the time of the issue, but anyway, I just...
Do you have an item you wanted to speak on?
It's fine. This is, this will work just fine. It's no worries.
You can go home if you say it now, otherwise you're going to hang out till...
I was actually going to stay the whole meeting just to be...
Would you want to come back when we do item 14?
I'm just, I could put them all together or...
Go now. It's all, we've been talking about art, and you want to talk about art.
Right. I just wanted to say that I support your looking at enhancing our artistic activities. I was part of our past History and Arts Commission. Oh, by the way, we have an archive of art. We have many art pieces, probably like 30, that we own, just...
You say "we," who "we"?
The city. We purchase them yearly when I was the commissioner. I would say at least 10 to, 10 to 15 at the very least, and I believe that art is a great vehicle for enhancing the community within and exposing its value without. So, I just wanted to speak highly of that concept that you're working towards, and say hello. It's been a while since I've come up.
Always be good to you, Thomas.
Anyway, thank you so very much.
You know, we have in the police department in the lobby, the two people... You know, we have in the police department, in the lobby, the two people, the-
Right, yeah, yeah, yeah.
That was from an art show that we had early on in-
Right, right, yeah, yeah. So, anyway, I'll, thank you very much.
Thank you, Thomas. And that's all the speaker sheets I have unless somebody wants to fill out a blue sheet and run it up here. Seeing none. Next item, please.
Next item is comments by councilmembers and regional board updates.
I'll start with Ms. Nelson.
Thank you, Mayor. I have attended a couple of events recently. This week, we, a few of us were at the Community Dinner put on by Reach at the Event Center, still called the Community Center here in the city. And that was a great time. There were a couple hundred people there, I think, maybe a little bit less. And it was just put on very well. It was different than last year, and I appreciated the changes. So shout out to Reach. Good job on that event and good job on bringing us all together. Then yesterday, I attended an HOA meeting for the Stonegate Community on the north side of our city, and then followed that up with our chant meeting, the Area 3 meeting here in City Hall.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Has it, well, I had one really, really busy day, but the rest of the time was not terribly busy. I sat in for, well, I had an RT briefing over lunch on the 27th. That was directly after the last council meeting. And then on the 3rd, I sat in for the mayor and enjoyed that very much. Got to chat with Mr. Shelton there. And so, it was great.
Ms. Hackbart came.
Yes, and Bruce Hackbart, which I hadn't seen Bruce Hackbart in person in quite a long time. He calls me on the phone quite often, but it was really nice to see him in person. And then on the 10th, which was the really busy day, I had a SECOG Policy and Innovation Committee meeting in the morning. And this is where we got a briefing from our policy advocate that's in Washington, D.C. and here in the state. I just want to say that when it comes to, we could all be doom and gloom about what the new administration is. There hasn't been a lot that's happened yet. I think we're worried about what could happen, but we really don't know what's, from a policy standpoint, from a real impactful standpoint, we haven't really seen a whole lot. It's only been two months. But I would say that folks just need to take a breath and let things happen the way they're going to happen. They're not going to change a lot. But nonetheless, it just seems like a little, a lot of doom and gloom there. Then, on the same day, I had an RT board meeting that was in the afternoon. There I gave the report that I gave here, actually, I've sat on the Capitol Corridor. This is the train service that goes from Roseville to, down to the Bay Area. And like I said, here, there, we had 24 trains. We're going to 30 trains. Ridership's up. 75% of the fare revenue is actually supporting the system. So this is, meaning that 75% of the funding from the system comes from ridership, and ridership is up. So we're adding trains. I think that's a fantastic, really positive story. And as a result of that, we're actually reducing fares, reducing fares by up to 30%. So that's another really positive thing. And most of, when we talk about transportation funding, most of the transportation funding is based on a formula. It's based on, it really is set by Congress. The president really doesn't have a ton of influence on what can change with transportation funding. It's a little, not much. So, and then I actually, on the same day, I attended the Reach Dinner, which I just really enjoy, the folks in our neighborhoods, the, it's just such a positive experience going to those meetings. So I really enjoyed it. I want to thank the folks from Reach that put that on. It was really well done, and I enjoyed it very much. So with that, that's all I have, Mayor. Oh, I do want to mention one other thing. So I did have mentioned before that SVMA is doing a high school challenge. We're up to 114 registrants for high schools. We have San Juan Unified is the, probably was leading the pack with, I think they have 37 kids registered from San Juan Unified. It's really going to be a positive thing, seeing from really, I've gone and visited some schools, and I'm just, I think this is really, this is open to the public. It's completely free to attend. It's kind of like a science fair. But I think you'll be, if you come, you'll be kind of surprised at how innovative these kids are. This is a, it's essentially a 3D tic-tac-toe game is what they're innovating on. So it can be electronic, it can be made out of wood, it can be a matter of metal, and it's really fantastic. That'll be on April 26th here at the Community Center. Thank you very much for the support, City Manager Feeny. But that's all I have.
Councilmember Middleton?
Thank you, Mayor. Let's see, going all the way back in time to February 27th, I went to a Sacramento area district meeting. They talked about a lot of different items. And it was a really interesting and very deeply scientific conversation that I, yeah, air quality is a complex topic, and how do we encapsulate and track things is becoming a real concern about where we find out, how do we measure things that are happening in North Highlands with our air quality in comparison to Sacramento City where there are other pollutants and going on, and how do we track that across the region? My eyes glazed over a little bit because we had some PhDs in the room, and I'm like, yeah, you guys just let me know, right? That day, I also went to the Afisha Gala, and it was celebrated right here in Citrus Heights at the Citrus Community Center, which is right on San Juan and Greenback. And it's our Ukrainian community coming together to celebrate business owners. And just watching the youth dances, tasting the food, and just really watching them celebrate their community was amazing. On March 3rd, I did the Read Across America, or better known as Dr. Seuss Day, at Carriage Elementary, and I read the book Not Quite Snow White. Once you read a book five times, I tell you what, it used to be my favorite book, not so much. And I also, later that afternoon, that morning, I went to this, went along, right along with the Citrus Heights Police Department. And that in itself was very much eye-opening, and I have, I've always had a deep appreciation of what our department does for us. But actually riding along, having them talk to me about just everyday, mundane things, you know, asking them their opinion about stuff, it was incredible. And we had like a break-in at the Sears. Yeah, people were living in the Sears building. So I got to sit outside because I'm not, I'm not that brave, and watched them go inside and make sure everything was safe there. We even brought out the, I'm going to call it a drone, I know it's not really a drone, unarmed something, something. I see you back there, chief. We took out our drone and like got down in there and like got to see what was really going on. Saturday, March 8th, I went to the NABO Awards with, we were honoring our outstanding women leaders. It was so many individual women in our community, business owners, who have done such great work throughout the region. And to have like three or four nominees in a category and have to narrow that down to just one person was, I was biting my nose. I was like, oh my God, who is it going to be? Because their stories and what they've done is just so impactful and credible. And Monday, March 10th, we did our Sacramento Valley Division meeting. I am your immediate past president for that. Yay. We are still planning out our annual calendar for where we're going to actually go and talk to other cities within our jurisdiction. And once we get those dates solidified, I'll have maybe Amy send out a calendar invite in case you guys want to go up to Yuba City. I don't know. Maybe you will, maybe you won't. But we'll be back in Elk Grove again this year, so we'll be close.
You've been busy. Nice, Mayor. How busy have you been?
I've been busy doing other things, but I have been around the community, which I love. I'll start with my Sac Public Library meeting. We talked budget. It was their mid-year budget recap, and fortunately, they are doing well. They have a few big repairs that they're doing on a couple libraries, but those were planned. I also participated in Read Across America Day. I did not know it was unofficially called Dr. Seuss Day. Now I'm very excited about it. But I read to second graders at Grand Oaks Elementary, and let me tell you, these second graders are a wiggly bunch, but we read one of my favorite books, and it was about kindness. I spent a year personally studying kindness, and I love seeing and reading books on kindness and sharing that with the next generation. I attended also the National Association of Women Business Owners event on the 8th with Councilmember Middleton. And for my part, I'm always excited about how do we reward and inspire youth? And the award I presented that evening was for a young lady who was in high school who created a business and did her business pitch through our business pitch program with Junior Achievement. And then her teacher wrote in about her accomplishments besides entering this particular activity. And this young lady absolutely deserved every accolade we can throw at her. She was accomplished both academically, and she served in different nonprofits. She served her student population in clubs and club leadership while, you know, maintaining a more than 4.0 average. And so, that's someone who we want to encourage, who we want to continue to see do great things, and she's just a sophomore. What were you doing at 15? That's what I had to ask myself. And so, I'm glad I'm here now, and I'm no longer 15. I made it through. But that was just so wonderful to encourage young people as well as very accomplished women professionals. And on the 10th, I attended the Reach Potluck. Always nice to see our neighbors out and, you know, enjoying each other's company more than anything. The weather wasn't bad, and it was, it was great to be out and just break bread with one another. And that program was very well done, meaningful speakers, and no pressure to bring a dish because the meal was prepared for us. And so, that was a nice change, and I think a welcome change. So very, very nicely done to the Reach Board and all the volunteers who participated.
Mayor? Thank you. So, I found out what that was on the 28th. That was the one you wanted me to go to for you?
Oh.
But I signed up to go, and then I didn't because instead, I went over to the Historical Society and met that group of people. We have a Citrus Heights Historical Society, so in case you didn't know. I participated in like a teams meeting with a young man from, was it actually two of them, one from Vermont or New Hampshire, and another guy was in Washington, D.C. And they gave me a presentation on the importance of early detection of lung cancer. So I asked the guy, I says, I didn't want to take notes. I says, can you send me this PowerPoint? He said, yes, he would, and he did not. But from what I remember, you know, without taking notes, was that early detection can increase people's, they have now, they do this special CT scan that it's like a spiral scan, and they can detect early lung cancer before you have any symptoms whatsoever, and then your survival rate is 90% better than if you wait until you're having symptoms. So like there's qualifications for this. According to him, you have to have smoked for 30 years, you had to have quit so many years ago. And so, I don't have enough information on it, maybe because the guy didn't send me anything. But if I get more information, because he said that Awareness Month was November, and I'm thinking November, March, you know, so anyway. Then, the best part of my month was I went to Gertrude's birthday party, the lady who's 108 years old. I went to her party. You came over.
I did.
He came over. There had to be 108 people there. I mean, she had that many people. She's all her cookies. She's got a great sense of humor. She is funny. And so, I enjoyed being invited. They treated me like I was a celebrity, you know, the mayor is here. And I was like, I was just so proud and honored to be there with all her friends and family. It was just incredible. That was incredible. And then I participated in Read Across America. I went to Grand Oaks. I got to read to, what's the youngest ones? TK?
Oh, TK.
TK. And then I got kindergarten, which were better. And then I got the other one, the one between TK and kindergarten. And I read a book called Rescuing Humphrey, and it's a book about a goose that was rescued. And the goose was actually my personal goose. There's a woman in Citrus Heights that was walking down my road, and she saw my goose in the yard, and he's an interesting goose named Ed. Ed was born on Election Day, E-D. And so, she wrote a book about Ed, and it's a children's book, and so I read it. I brought a chicken egg, a duck egg, and a goose egg. And it's a, it's a, Sabastopol is the breed, and it's in a threatened species, so the kids got to like wide-eyed looking at the eggs. And I brought a little stuffed, well, it's a fake goose that looks just like Ed. So that was great. They got to see a little fuzzy thing. Anyway, that was a very, I had a great experience. And so, what you say, you know, after you read it a couple times, it loses, it loses its, I should have brought more than one book. So I, but I did do that. Then I met, we met with Regina and a man who lives in Citrus Heights who wants to start a organization with kids called KAT, K-A-T, Kids Against Trash. And he will help organize kids to clean up trash, you know, as a public, as a public service, community service, once a month at events or in the neighborhoods. But once it gets organized, so I think Regina is going to help him put together something, but he'll do most of the work, I hope. But it was a very good, good meeting. Then we are going to have our strategic planning, and I'm sure the manager will talk about that during his presentation. But in preparation of that meeting, all of us council members had to, you know, do our little written reports of what we want to talk about, and then be interviewed on the phone by the guy who's going to be the coordinator of the retreat. And so, we talked about various questions, you know, how we feel the city's doing, and so he talks to each of us individually. And so, we'll be putting that all together, and it's open to the public, and we welcome anybody who comes and wants to see how we plan the next three years of our due list, thanks to our city staff and our city manager, who brings the due list. I did go to the LAFCO meeting. I am the alternate, but I went to go just in case the galt guy doesn't show up. I'll be sitting right there, and so, it's nothing ever on that agenda. They're still dissolutioning the Del Paso Manor Water District. So it was mostly a CEQA, you know, negative declaration for CEQA. And then I went to, oh, Senator Nilo and somebody, Man Hoover, put on Scam Stoppers. You showed up at that, too? So Scam Stoppers was really well-attended. It was so well-attended that they moved it from here to the Community Center. And there was several hundred people there. It was well-attended. It was well-informational about scams that are going on. And it just don't realize, they had three different state organizations talked about the scams, you know, Department of Corporations, the contractors, you know, people that come to your house and scam you out of stuff. We did have a closed session as a council during this week. It was last week. I did Monday with the mayor. Read Across America, he filled in for me, and then last week, I went myself. And it is an opportunity, you know, because if we start reducing our five minutes to three minutes, I just want to warn people that it's probably going to come because the last meeting, we were here till 10:30 at night. And so, we sometimes have to, you know, limit the conversation to three minutes. And so, if we do this, just to let you know, you can come to Monday with the mayor and between 9:00 and noon at City Hall and tell us what's going on. You get direct response because here, we can't, really, it's not agendized. We can't do anything. If you come Monday with the mayor, we generally act right on it, get the appropriate staff, get information. Last time, I had a guy who's concerned about chemtrails, so we got information about that and sidewalk vending. So just saying that it's a good place to come for talking. I did go to the Reach Dinner, and I appreciate all the food that was donated by the various sponsors, but nothing beats Mrs. Schaefer's white bean chicken chili that I was looking forward to. I always bring an extra container to take up the leftovers home, too. And then, oh, and then I did a video with Elijah Wilbur over at Grand Oaks for San Juan District, kind of a thing like, how do you think the city is getting along with the school district? What's the importance and that kind of stuff? So that video will be on, I don't know, on their Facebook. I'm not sure where it's going to be, you know. I think I did a good job, but we'll see. I guess it's, never know. So I'm busy. So that, and- So that and I had one other thing, and I don't know if it's appropriate for me, I got a, this is, we're not going to have a city council meeting on the 26th because of our strategic retreat. So I don't have an opportunity to share this information before April. And this is a lady called from Laguna Beach. And she works for a foundation that conserves water. And so I'm thinking I'll hit the neighborhoods with this information because it's, it's the website is MyWaterPledge, M-Y-W-A-T-E-R-P-L-E-D-G-E, MyWaterPledge.com. And so the mayor, me, will go on there and set up a thing. And then people from the City of Citrus Heights go on, sign up as the City of Citrus Heights, and you make a water pledge. There's 17 different options for you to choose from, like you're not going to use plastic, you're going to use, you know, Brit water, various different things of ways you can save the environment and save water. The city, you get, you get an opportunity to win eco-friendly prizes. And the city gets points and the city can win things. And then the cities in California all compete. So I will, I'd like to, you know, somehow, some, I'll set it up as our city because the first one on is how to participate. So you go to, and then you can do outdoor projects besides the online stuff, but you make yourself eligible for prizes. And we're good for this. We're good. We can conserve water. I'll take it over to Hillary, the Water District, and see what he wants to do while getting this word out. And I think if I, you know, share this with the neighborhood leaders, that they can bring it to each neighborhood as well. So it's all competition. I just got this. I mean, she called like yesterday. So I didn't have an opportunity to get it out there. So I'd like to do more information. I think it's going to be a fun project. Okay, that's all I have. I guess there's a next item in there somewhere.
The next item is Consent Calendar, and we have number seven, the Approval of Minutes. Number eight, the Consolidated Annual Performance Evaluation Report. Item nine, the 2024 General Plan Annual Progress Report. Item 10, Appointment to Fill Vacancy on the Planning Commission. Item 11 is a Grant Request for Attendance at the 2025 Neighborhoods USA Conference. And number 12, Economic Development Support Fund Grant Request for the Sunrise Marketplace Backyard Bash Sponsorship.
Anybody want to pull any item? Seeing none, I'll take a motion.
I move approval.
I'll second.
Moved by Schaefer, seconded by Nelson. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Brings us to the Regular Calendar.
Yes, our next item, Regular Calendar, item number 13. The subject is Traffic Signal Control Cabinet Art Program. The recommendation is that staff seeks input from City Council before the program can be finalized and ready for implementation.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and City Council Members. Regina Cave, your General Services Director, and with me is our City Engineer, Ms. Leslie Blumquist. And dovetailing off of the discussion of arts this evening, we are presenting on the Traffic Signal Control Art Cabinet Program.
So over the past several years, both council members and the community have expressed interest in increasing art in public spaces. Last spring, City Council adopted a strategic goal to enhance community vibrancy and engagement. And as part of that goal, an objective was also adopted to develop a program and budget to wrap traffic control boxes to increase art in public spaces. And this objective also supports the city's current and ongoing efforts for beautification. However, this wouldn't be the city's first effort to implement public-facing art in the community. Currently, the city has two art sculptures, the Celebrate Citrus Heights Sculpture at the Event Center and the Up and Away Sculpture in Greenback Park. There's also the Sylvan Corners Lighted Cyrenials, murals throughout the city, as we heard about earlier, including the Painted Pony Wall at the Oak and Wachtel Intersection, other murals and smud transformer wraps in the Sunrise Marketplace, as well as various Welcome to Citrus Heights Gateway Entrance Signs. And more is currently under construction as art will be incorporated into the current Auburn Boulevard Complete Streets Phase Two project with the installation of a gateway arch that will be at the northern city limits. Currently, the city has 63 traffic signal controller cabinets of varying sizes throughout our community. Selection of the art to be installed on the cabinets would likely need community input. And potential resources for outreach and coordination include neighborhood area groups, other established community groups, schools, business districts and/or business representatives and developers. The cost for implementation could potentially come from neighborhood improvement program funds, private sponsorships, such as from developers, businesses, or local artists. And for city funds, potential funding sources might include both Measure Eight Maintenance or the General Fund.
So for the proposed program, staff are proposing that we would create a Traffic Signal Control Cabinet Inventory Map made available to the public so folks can see exactly where the cabinets are located. It would provide information also for staff because each of these cabinets have different specifications and measurements. We would launch a webpage dedicated specifically to the program and solicit interest for sponsors and community stakeholders to participate in this program. We would then issue a request for proposals for the vinyl cabinet wrapping services. There are a whole host of vendors in our area that service other jurisdictions as well as some that actually helped to manufacture the cabinets themselves, so they're very well aware of the whole process. We would produce and publish a packet of information, including the cabinet sponsorship application, program guidelines, the design restrictions, and installation and maintenance responsibilities, as ultimately those cabinets are owned and maintained by the city. And then we would issue a call to artists for artwork. And again, dovetailing off of the presentation earlier given by Ms. Rayford, this would probably potentially be a really good opportunity to work with Ms. Rayford, possibly some of the local schools here, maybe through their arts program. And I believe one of the council members possibly had an idea. We can discuss about that when we're concluded in our presentation. And so for guideline considerations, we would look to make sure that this is art-focused, this is family-friendly, as these are all in public spaces and we want to make sure that we are very sensitive, that not only is art subjective, but we want to make sure that it is appealing to, to all and pleasing and add value to our community. This would be original works. So and looking at other agencies across the United States, what we've seen, a lot of them have actually restricted to where there's no words or numbers. We wouldn't have, not allow corporate branding or breach of intellectual property or depictions of illegal activity. There could potentially be some modifications we could make or considerations to use the city logo, city seal, or police department seal. And if we wanted to have any specific cabinets near maybe some schools, that would highlight safety in using crosswalks, that may be a good opportunity to promote safety. And then designs must be continuous to cover all sides of the cabinets. Here's a little bit of a sneak peek of what our program brochure would look like. And then that concludes. So we are available for any questions, concerns, any input, any thoughts that you would like to share that we could incorporate before we officially launch the program.
My question is, where does my, where do my colleagues stand when it comes to AI? AI is a big thing where, you know, folks are using that to generate art. And is it actually sticking to the, the spirit of what's going on here? I know that, you know, that's, it's a tool that's being used, but I just kind of wanted to get your, your assessment of that.
I can speak on that. I, I think that's a really interesting question. I, I do understand that to create the AI prompt, it takes a kind of delicate touch. So there is, I can argue, an art form to creating the prompt that you use to develop the imagery. So I'd be open to maybe if you're suggesting there's a possibility some artist might submit an AI-generated work, I may be open to that.
I think if we, if we do allow for that, I think, you know, as arts is, is expanding and it's, you know, subjective, maybe we kind of limit it. We don't want to see a bunch of art that's been computer-generated. I really think that if you're seeing things out in our community, it would be more, more of a hands-on, something that really comes from the brain and really causes you to have to focus and be creative.
I have a comment, Mayor.
Go for it.
You know, it's really interesting, so I've really gotten into AI a lot lately. And you're absolutely right. There is, I, I generated some computer images of our lighting program. And it took a few iterations of, to, to generate what I was looking for. And so I would say you do have to get pretty creative about how you prompt AI to create something. And I think that that's a form of art in and of itself. So but, and that's just my comment on that. But the other comment I had, so, so this is, an artist makes this and then it's converted into a, to a wrap.
That is correct.
So in theory, if that, heaven forbid, that a car would run into a signal box or something like that, it would, would maintenance cover the, the cost of regenerating the wrap and putting the wrap back? Or I would assume that it would be the, hopefully, the automobile insurance of the car that hit it would be paying for that.
As we dive further into the program and we confirm what the costs will be for these actual wraps, our ballpark is 1,500 to 3,000, depending on the size of the cabinets and depending on the total number of cabinets that are wrapped at any given time. As councils may aware, when construction in a lot of these industries, the more work that you have to the contractor at one given time, the less mobilization costs they charge. And so you'll be able to capture, you know, a more doable price. So if a cabinet is, happened to be hit and we do have insurance covered by the individual, we would, you know, definitely make sure that that takes care of it. We would have to explore opportunities to be able to cover it either through our measuring maintenance funds or another source of revenue, if it is sponsored by an individual or a group.
So I, how long's a wrap last?
Five to seven years.
Okay, so you just have to think about five to seven years down the road, either just let it peel off or you just replace it, you know, and.
Typically what other agencies are doing.
You know, this goes into our, we're going to talk about this a little later, the budget-wise, we will not, we won't, we may not necessarily have the funding to do that at any, might be able to do it just fine now, but we may be impacted later, 10 years down the road, five years down the road, seven years down the road, when it's time to do this. And then we have to get creative about how we would replace those. So it's a, it, it would be a long-term maintenance issue that we would certainly want to think, think about.
Is it graffiti-proofed?
They are. So to touch on your point, Mr. Schaefer, that there is also a maintenance benefit to the city by having these wraps because they do have that anti-graffiti on it. Because of the art, you typically don't get other folks vandalizing existing art. So it does reduce the city's liability or the city's cost for graffiti abatement.
So in essence, I'm, I'm envisioning kind of a, an adopt a cabinet art program. And would it be possible that we have a phase in? So, you know, the most visible common locations, I know you're developing a map. Maybe we just phase in 10 are available to be adopted by this program and, and after we find out costs and whatnot, I think, I think that will help define who will pick up that idea. Because you may have independent artists who say, you know, I would love to do this one nearer a school because I have a child that goes there, or this is my neighborhood. I would love to do that. So, you know, I would say, create a limited scope of an adopt, for lack of a better phrase, adopt a cabinet art program and see, see what kind of takers we have.
Except you'd have to spread it all out because I would want to adopt a cabinet where I go. So there'd be one in my section and somebody over here might want one over there. I hadn't thought about AI.
Such a good question.
It's weird.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to ask a clarifying question on that too, because I appreciate that consideration. I wonder, since we have, since we'll have the map and the webpage, if we can have a little blurb about the art and like what medium it was originally composed in and maybe more about the artist and maybe their, their vision for the art, you know, kind of a little like artist statement.
Is it signed? Does the artist get to put a little teeny, my, my name on the bottom if, I don't have any talent, but if they had their, their, do they get to sign it at the bottom?
That is what we were proposing for the limitations of wording on these cabinets would just be for either the sponsor of the cabinet or the artist.
I'm visualizing a QR code going back to our city website. Maybe depending on where they're located, you can even work, work in, you know, just say, hey, like, let's do like an art walk, right?
Art tour.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If it costs more money, you have to ask Tim about it then. We could.
For the city, all the little artwork in there. Yeah.
That's a great idea. And Director Cave, you touched on the idea of reaching out to the community members and having their input on what art gets selected. I was curious about that and was hoping that we could invite the art teachers, and I think you said that too, but the art teachers from the local schools. And I think that'd be a great way to, to get them involved and to show their students that there's a pathway to use their art, that it's not just necessarily a school project, but that there are opportunities to, to display their art outside of school. So that'd be really fun.
Are you hearing that you're volunteering to assist?
I would love to assist with that. Yeah, I'd love to sit on that committee.
Thank you. Any other thoughts or comments that we can take back to finalize?
No, come back when you're, when you get some, the map.
We will. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, so the next item is item 14. The subject is Arts and Culture Program. So we're going to continue our discussion on arts. And so staff is seeking input from City Council before the program can be finalized. So good evening, Mayor and City Council, Amy Van, the City Clerk. So I'll be giving an overview of the Arts and Cultural, Culture Program. So at the March 28th, 2024 Strategic Planning Retreat, the City Council discussed exploring opportunities for an arts and culture program to promote creativity, cultural awareness, and community engagement. And during this discussion, when council was discussing this strategic objective, Citrus Heights Hearts, Citrus Heights Arts was identified as a key stakeholder with the potential to help advance this objective. And you've already seen some of these in the previous presentation, but since incorporation, the city has undertaken various efforts to support arts and culture, including the installation of the Up and Away artwork, as well as the Celebrate Citrus Heights that you have just saw in the previous presentation. And then we have provided grants to several organizations, and I've just highlighted a couple of those that have been supported by Economic Development Support Fund Grants for murals in the Sunrise Marketplace, Community Projects Grants for the Citrus Heights Arts, Art Beat Event that we heard about earlier this evening, and a History and Arts Grant for the release of the book Becoming the City of Citrus Heights by, written by Miranda Culp in collaboration with Bill Van Dugger. So this is just a very brief highlight of some of those projects that we have undertaken since the city's incorporation. So local government plays a crucial role in activating community partners with a passion for arts and culture. And to first, further support arts and culture in Citrus Heights, the city can undertake several steps to enhance art programming in the community. And so I'll just be presenting some of those steps. So the first one would be to develop an arts and cultural interest group. This would be in the form of a public workshop or a roundtable with local artists, businesses, schools, and community members. This would give an opportunity to gather input from stakeholders on types of arts initiatives that they would like to see within the community. And this could help identify opportunities for future partnerships, events, and long-term arts planning. Second would be to explore a partnership framework. The city could consider developing an informal agreement that can provide a clear framework for collaboration between the city and arts organizations such as Citrus Heights Arts. This helped, helps define roles, expectations, while maintaining flexibility. And through this framework, the city could partner on marketing efforts to increase visibility for city-sponsored events, as well as community-led arts events. And we could, the city could also explore ways to identify city spaces that could potentially host art exhibits, workshops, or other arts programming. Third, as you've heard just before this item, incorporating art in city projects, such as the Traffic Signal Control Cabinet Art Program. And projects like this definitely enhance community spaces while supporting local artists. And the fourth option is to develop, to develop an online resource page on the city's web. And the fourth option is to develop, to develop an online resource page on the city's website to promote, uh, arts-related events, uh, funding opportunities through, through the city's grants programs and, uh, community-driven initiatives. And so with that, um, those, by taking some of these steps, the city can help cultivate, uh, vibrant arts and cultural scene, fostering creative expression in the community. Um, and with that, I'm happy to answer any questions and to receive further in, input from the city council, uh, on what has been presented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I love all of these ideas. So, um, I, I really am excited about the idea of reaching out to the community and seeing who is interested in participating in a group like this. Um, and like I mentioned earlier, teachers, you know, all kinds of people might be interested in this. And then the, uh, webpage seems like a natural fit. Um, and then the control box page can be a, a sub-page to that, um, overall arts and culture page. I think that's a great idea. Yeah.
Okay. So, uh, and, and I, I like it too. I like it. Uh, what I would say is we've introduced a lot of new stuff here just in this one meeting. And I would like to see what settles out from here. Uh, meaning, uh, from art, from an art beat perspective, I like the idea, let's start with a webpage um, and kind of, uh, let people see what the, but I think a lot of it will, um, I think we'll, we'll see a flood of ideas, which is great. But I think that, um, going off and, you know, a bunch of different directions right off the bat is probably something we just want to say, hey, how did art beat go? This, this is kind of what generated from that. And if you're hav- having a, uh, interest in exploring this, you have some examples. Then you go to the website and you say, hey, here's an idea. Because quite honestly, I just fielded a ton of information, a ton of ideas. I just got an email tonight about somebody wants to do, uh, they want to turn them all into this and they want to turn them all into that and they want to turn them all into the other thing. And it just gets too many, uh, it's not focused enough to really bring some, something in. So I would say, we've heard a lot tonight about art, which is great. I support it a hundred percent. But I also, uh, it just feels like a shotgun approach right now. And I'd like to see fun, see it funnel down a little bit and a little more focused on, okay, well, this is the direction we want to go. We want to go with wrapping the, um, the, the utility boxes. Or we want to go to the, the mural, um, uh, project. Uh, I, I think that, again, um, let's just let this settle just a little bit and see how people, see how, what interests we have. I think we're going to have a lot of interest. Um, but let's see, let's, let's see what sort of gels from this.
I'll do the vice mayor. Look on this way.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I, I do agree with you, Tim. I, I think we've heard a lot of things tonight and, and I, I always like to start with what, let's define what is before we create something new. And I really love the idea of having a website that showcases what we already have in our community. Because what we already have in our community is Citrus Heights Art. We already have our Historical Society. And, and those are all, uh, well-known in our community. And I think if we have a location, a website, that points to all of those existing assets in our community and then organically create an art and culture interest group, it just makes more sense to, to push out information to those already interested groups. Um, and who know about those current groups? So I, I love art. I'm going to also ask that you include performing arts in there. We had a lot of visual arts. I am one who's interested in music, dance, and, and all the other areas of art. Um, and I know we have a, a youth theater here in the city and I would hate for them to feel, um, ignored as one of the, the art spots in our community.
Councilmember Middleton.
So, um, I think we're all pretty much in alignment here. I think that we're already doing three and four, right? And so far, we've been doing it pretty well and we've got a, a pathway forward. I think what we're missing is the fact that there are so many different bits of art from the bid to what, you know, Citrus Heights Arts is doing, to what we're trying to do, that housing all that information in one space would be extremely helpful for folks who want to see it and get involved. And just, and just to kind of put a spotlight on it, this is what art looks like in Citrus Heights, right? So folks can stop saying, oh, we don't have any art here. Yeah, no, it's right here and the city is deeply involved and deeply committed to that. Yeah, those were my comments.
I, I think you could do it all at one time. It's like, I don't want to wait for a settle. I, I kind of think that some people will be attracted to this, some people will be attracted to that. I absolutely have visual, uh, and performing on my list because it's no art if you're not performing art. And I noticed that, the other thing I would insist is that we have a venue for children, kids. Because kids can express a lot of their anger in arts, their frustrations in arts. And I think it's an outlet for kids. And when we see the calendar contest, some of the talent that's in our city. And, um, Grand Oaks is taking their thousand-dollar grant and doing an art show. And I will be late for the April first, the first meeting in April because I'm going to that art show. Before I come to council, I'll be a little bit late. Vice Mayor gets to, to run the meeting. But I, I really look forward to seeing the art that generates from these kids. It's just incredible what they, they envision. So anyway, I want to make sure that we include youth in this program. And the other thing I thought of after Regina gave her presentation is all these little, um, boxes. One time at League of Cities, and I forget which city it was, they had a deck of cards with all their art in their city on a different card. So we could do a city deck of cards that it has all of our boxes, art boxes. Each box would be a card. There are fifty-two of them. There's sixty-five little boxes. So I think we could invent our own deck of cards.
That's a great idea. That could be a fundraising.
It'd be a fundraiser, yeah. So for some of the reps. So, um, that's down the road, I know, but anyway. So it's kind of, and a lot of the stuff, Amy, that you've presented is all, all of it's good. It's just a matter of phasing it in as we grow and just saying, yes, we're ready for that. We're ready for the step. A little bit of settling, but I, I don't want to push something away. I, I think if we want to start engaging the community, it's time. Because creative engagement is where we really have to start. And if you want, uh, we can, you know, let two council members be part of that process. So if we could, so we could, um, you know, do that at the next meeting, maybe have a, like another.
Ad hoc, like a city council ad hoc.
An ad hoc, yeah. An ad hoc committee for the city, just like we have our finance committee. We can have our little art committee. Do you put that on next agenda maybe, huh? Do that? Yes?
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Is that something you'd, you want to bring forward or discuss as part of this item?
Forward is so that we can, and, and that way two council members will stay abreast of what's going on. And, and when there is something to be, you know, we'll leave it to them to bring it to us if they have to go forward with anything, kind of like we do with quality of life. Does that make sense, Ash? Is that, we're good? We'll do that?
Okay, we could certainly bring that.
And work with staff to, to, to make sure we go at the pace the council can handle.
Absolutely. I appreciate your feedback.
I like that thought. Okay, any other comments on this item? I like my deck of cards.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next item then.
The next item is item number fifteen. The subject is Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Five Mid-Year Budget Adjustment and Financial Forecast Update. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution approving amendments to the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Four, Twenty Five Budget.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Councilmembers. Susan Talbore here, Administrative Services Director. Um, you have, and you have already gone through the staff report, which was in much more detail. So tonight, we're going to give you just the quick highlights on the mid-year budget review.
Good evening, Council. Alberto Preciado, Finance Manager. Happy to be here to discuss, uh, the mid-year with you. Okay, we're going to be going through the Fiscal Year Twenty Five General Fund Mid-Year Budget Status Report and the Ten Year Financial Forecast Update. A little background on the General Fund cash flow. The General Fund's revenue sources, uh, some of the major sources are cyclical and often received towards the latter part of the fiscal year. Uh, the expenditures, on the, on the other hand, can be, you know, constant throughout the year or front-loaded. Uh, this results in the General Fund needing to rely on its cash reserves during, uh, the beginning part of the fiscal year to fund its operations. Uh, this is demonstrated, uh, looking at the summary for the Twenty Five Budget Actual. Uh, the operating shortfall for the General Fund is five-point-three million dollars. However, staff projects that at year end, there will be a, um, surplus of six-hundred-eighty-five thousand dollars. Staff is recommending adjustments to both the revenue and expenditure budgets. The revenue adjustments are total eighteen, eighty-four thousand, five hundred dollars. The expenditure adjustments total four-hundred-five thousand dollars. Of that, three-hundred-eighty-one thousand dollars is requested for police department booking fees. Booking fees are paid to the county and are calculated on a three-year rolling average. We are currently in the spike of that three-year rolling average and staff projects that we will, will be reducing, uh, in the coming years and then stabilizing. Staff last brought the ten-year forecast to council at the June twenty-four meeting for the mid-cycle update. Staff prepares this forecast to assist in fiscal planning and, and help us to identify potential issues. The changes, uh, for this current forecast are the updated revenue projections and updated expenditure projections discussed in the previous slide. I just wanted to focus on two columns of, of the forecast during this presentation. The first one is our Fiscal Year Twenty Four Unaudited Actual, uh, Performance for the Year. The main highlight I wanted to point out was the nine-million-dollar net operating position as compared to the five-point-seven-million-dollar, uh, projected amended budget, uh, net operating position. This will result in an ending reserve balances for the General Fund of thirty-point-two million dollars. The other column I wanted to highlight was the Fiscal Year Twenty Five Mid-Year Projection. Uh, as I discussed earlier, uh, staff is projecting a six-hundred-eighty-five-thousand-dollar net operating surplus for the year. Uh, with two-point-six million dollars in anticipated ARPA fund reimbursements. That will result in twenty-nine-point-five-million-dollar ending reserve balance. And that leads us to our recommended actions. Staff recommending that the city council review the General Fund revenues and expenditures for the first seven months of Fiscal Year Twenty Five and the updated ten-year financial forecast and adopt a resolution approving amendments to the Fiscal Year Twenty Five Budget. And with that, we're open for questions.
Questions? Councilmember Middleton? Vice Mayor?
Yes.
I know you do because I'm, you're last. I know you do. You always do. Okay, Mr. Schaefer.
Well, thank you.
Go for it.
So, and I, I did get the detailed, um, there were some, some concerning pieces that were in the detail. And one of those details was a, a reduction in projected sales tax revenue. Uh, which is great that it's offset. We've been really smart about, um, our investments are going to take up that revenue. Um, but it, it, for me, it's a little bit of a yellow flag that says, hey, we can't assume moving forward that sales tax revenues are stable. So it's just kind of a, it, it's something that, that I hold back in the back of my mind that says, hey, you know, look, things look great, if things look fine, okay? They're, they're really not super, anything to be super concerned about. But if we have another cycle where we're seeing the same thing, then I'm going to get real concerned. Um, so that's my only comment.
And I see it as, uh, not a warning, but where we see the things that are costing more that we can kind of anticipate. So if we, if, the fact that we're missing an engineer is costing us more to have to go outside to get in some engineering services. And so we know we want to look forward to doing a recruitment for that position. So that might save money in the end. I have a question. What, why does booking fees, what does, what does that mean? Is this a fee that we pay to put someone in jail and then we're paying for him to sit in the cell? Is that a booking fee? What's a booking fee? To an, to an idiot that doesn't know what a booking fee is? I don't know what a booking fee is. That's three-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand dollars. What's a booking fee?
Yeah, good evening. Yeah, so the booking fees are just that. They're fees to book somebody in jail. There's a fee to have them medically screened. There's a fee to book them in. Um, certain fees are taken up by the state on mandatory bookings and some felony sections. Like another portion of that are taken through funding, but the, the leftover for, um, misdemeanors that aren't mandatory bookings, which is a lot of the work we're doing in quality of life, blight, and homeless. Um, those tend to hit that booking fee market.
This isn't money we pay to the county to put people into the county jail.
It is.
It is.
But it's a, it's a reimbursement for their expenditure, basically. Yeah, so there's a, whatever's left over, uh, that needs to be, um, taken up, gets divided on the three-year average that they're talking about. So we've seen a significant spike in our arrests, which is a wonderful thing for the community, but there's a cost on the back end. Our intention is to keep that spike at a similar level. Once we hit that three-year rolling average, those costs will start coming down. So right now, we're, we're paying for the, the increase in.
Kind of like our.
Lower level arrests.
Kind of like our UAL for our catching up with our, so, um, I had a question. Lift my mind. Lift my mind. That's okay. I'll ask it if I think, when we have lunch next time, I will, I'll ask it. But I just felt like, you know, like, whoa, let's not put them in jail. We'll save money.
No, let's not do that.
No, we want everybody to go to jail. It's going to cost us. So, and it's not covered by, because we pay a big, what is it, twenty-eight percent of our property taxes to the county? And I thought it covered all our jail costs.
No, we have, uh, we've researched this thoroughly and it is a fee that we are required to pay.
Okay.
But we definitely went through this, uh, line by line. And it's a government code section that requires, the only positive to that is we keep up the work we're doing. It should normalize and then that cost should start to come back down again.
Okay, okay. We look forward to that. Okay. So we need a resolution? Let's start.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay. Let's see the.
Okay, I'd like to, uh, let's see here.
It's a resolution.
It's a resolution?
Yes.
Stackerman, this is city, uh, review. Okay, sure. It should be on here though. Am I going to read this whole thing? Okay, so.
Just the title.
No, that's, this is old, Gina. Sorry. This is twenty-twenty-three.
Uh, we have it up on the screen.
Okay.
So it's, uh, Adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five Approving Amendments.
There we go.
Starting from there.
Uh, move as, as, as written. How's that? Does that work?
This is this one.
It says twenty-twenty-three.
Are, are we accepting that? Cause I'll second.
Yeah.
All right, that's, okay.
Anyway. All right, so I made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Mayor, it's your turn.
All those in favor.
Aye.
Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It says twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Finance Department. Good job.
The next item is Regular Calendar, item number sixteen. The subject is Or- Organized Retail Theft Grant Implementation and Operational Update. The recommendation is staff will present an update to the city council and the police department's organized retail theft grant implementation progress and operations.
Good evening, Mayor, Members of Council. Alex Turcot, your Chief of Police. And tonight, we'll be giving an update on organized retail theft, our grant operations, and just some other information associated with that. Um, as part of this last strategic planning process, you've all received some quarterly updates, but we wanted to make sure we had more of a robust discussion to be able to provide some additional information for not only you and the community. Uh, before we get started, just like to thank a couple people. Um, this was a wonderful opportunity to take advantage of this grant. But in order to be effective in the short window that we have to use this money, it has been a full team lift. Almost every, um, city department has helped us with that. Um, our retailers have collaborated in kind to make sure that we are, um, curbing this behavior as much as possible and using the dollars, um, as effectively as we can. I'll say Lieutenant Wes Herman in the back there for the police department. While it's been a full team left at the police department, he has been our point of contact, tech guru, and has really worked hard to get these things done. And also in conjunction with Director Cave's, uh, folks in, uh, General Services to get some of these assets actually fixed and up and running, which has been wonderful. All right, quick overview. We'll talk a little bit about the grant funding, uh, the technology assets that come along with the grant, some of the staffing that's provided by the grant, and then just some operational updates as well. For our overview, we received $2.7 million from the Board of State and Community Corrections. Of that, we've spent approximately $862,000, but all funds are encumbered, and we expect to have those spent out through the grant period. At the conclusion of the grant period, there'll be a local evaluation report from an objective third party to rate the efficacy of our particular program. Part of the purpose from the state grant was to give money to jurisdictions for them to try to see how they could best curb this behavior. So, while ours is focused on technology and some of the others, other jurisdictions might have a different way that they're trying to combat it. These evaluations will help them come together and see kind of what's the best practice moving forward that we can all then hopefully copy and replicate in other jurisdictions as well. Technology assets that we have, so fixed license cameras or fixed cameras is a significant technology asset. So far, we have fifty-five installed throughout the community, twenty-one are in the process. Now, again, we're trying to see how we can best use these. So, in future, moving forward after the grant is done, we don't expect that all of these cameras will still exist. We're trying to find the sweet spot of where we can do the most good and be reasonable with the amount of technology that's out there. In addition to that, we have three deployed mobile trailer platforms, and you might have seen those around town. We've had them in a couple different areas. Those LED lights are really bright, and you can see them from a long distance, and so far, they've been pretty helpful there. We have three off, we have three in-house right now. There's another three that are authorized, but we're undergoing a needs assessment because even after the grant cycle, they'll be part of our fleet. So, right now, three seems to be working well. If we need more, we'll look to get more. But if not, that might be an opportunity to do something else during that grant period as well. Software-wise, we have Live 911, which is almost fully implemented. This is a software that allows officers in their vehicles in real time to hear what's being said to dispatch. And while that might not seem like that big of a thing, thirty seconds of safety or hearing things real time can mean the difference between finding a suspect or properly helping a victim, and it's been very helpful. Peregrine software has already been implemented. This is another interesting technology piece, and we talked a little bit about AI and stuff. This is not necessarily that, but what this system does is, much like how our Arctic takes in all the disparate camera systems and puts them in a usable dashboard, this Peregrine software goes out to all the databases that are in disparate systems that you'd have to log into one at a time to pull down data sets. It takes all that data, dumps it into like a virtual sandbox where you can then start actual analysis and manipulate, as opposed to having to do the old cocktail napkin, writing down all the stats, and then figuring it out. And so far, that's been very helpful. Another asset that's funded by the grant will be a video wall. That'll be part of council's approved communications center remodel. So, as we remodel that, if you've been in our dispatch center, you can see they've got a number of screens. There's so much available information, we're just trying to make a bigger screen for them to be able to do the dispatching as well. And so, that'll be very helpful for them. This is a map of where those fixed locations are currently and where they'll be implemented. Prior to receiving this grant, we had utilized these cameras, and we had several privately-owned cameras where private property owners chose to put these type of cameras in to help curb issues at their properties as well. So, those are on there. Couple of the different ones there are, there's various lane configurations, there's pan tilt zoom, there's different iterations that we're reviewing to see which ones are the best and what the mix will be that'll be the most impactful for the city. Grant-funded staffing, currently, there's one full-time operator down at the Real-Time Information Center, or Arctic. Happens to be one of our dispatchers right now, but that is a fully funded position through the grant. And basically, we're leveraging the investment that Elk Grove made in their own Real-Time Information Center, but nowadays, because of the internet and availability of bandwidth, that operator can real-time watch and help in Citrus Heights without us having to build the full Arctic that Elk Grove has. So, mutually beneficial in that more staff in there helps everybody, but then it's really focused, ours is really focused here on Citrus Heights. So, not only can they help in in-progress crimes, but even something as small as when one of our officers make a traffic stop, if their backup hasn't got there, the operator can actually come over the top and look at them, make sure that they're safe, get additional resources. When we're in an in-progress event, you know, we have the helicopters, we have the small unmanned aerial vehicles, Councilmember Middleton, as well. But the Arctic really comes over the top, too, and can be able to get those eyes and ears there, which helps our officers be more focused in where they need to go, helps them slow down a lot of times to be able to more safely navigate through traffic, and it's been very helpful. And then also, that collaboration helps share crime trends across jurisdictions, because while we're very focused in our jurisdiction, the criminals don't necessarily pick one place, right? They're going multiple areas. Another very valuable resource is a part-time organized retail theft detective. This is a detective only works half-time, but has a tremendous amount of experience. We've had a lot of success in our Investigations Bureau, bringing back very experienced detectives in a reserve function. This is one specifically focused on organized retail theft. He has been working closely with our retail businesses, our loss prevention, not only to get the reports in, but train them in best practices and how to best report some of these things and share trend data. He's also the lead investigator on all the significant cases that you probably read in the staff report there as well, and we're seeing a lot of good success from that. Far as statistics, we're in an implementation phase. We're starting to see some numbers on the board, which is nice. Frankly, it's not that impressive yet. We're still working on getting that going, but I do want to point out that these statistics are specific to the grant objectives. We are tracking the additional value that these assets are bringing as well. So, when we make a determination what we will keep after the grant period, we'll have a better understanding of the full impact. But this is specific to organized retail theft, so you can see the arrests that have been accomplished and some of the incidents, and then also some of the stolen vehicles, which are part of the grant as well, which has been very helpful. In addition to our grant activities, we already were already concerned about organized retail theft, and our officers were already out there trying to do some things. So, in support of that, we did, we have conducted special operations as well. Our impact team during the holiday season last year conducted what they call blitz operations, and that is really taking a focus on a significant retailer that's been a target. They saturate that with both marked, unmarked, and even allied agencies to come there and just try to disrupt those rings when they've been known to operate. And so, had some good success in a couple of them. Some of them, you know, we didn't get it at the right time, so we're still gonna work out how those intel pieces work and figure that out. In that short term, you know, we have been able to see an increase, a forty-five percent increase in the amount of stolen property that we've recovered on behalf of our retailers. There's still a big hill to climb in that, because there's a lot of stuff that's getting taken, but it's nice to see those improvements, for sure. And in several significant cases, I talked about the organized retail theft, part-time detective. Through his work, they have been able to disrupt some statewide organized criminal enterprises and stuff that would just be interesting. Like, one of the major criminal enterprises was baby formula theft ring, and that is a huge deal, and for anyone who ever had to buy baby formula, it's already expensive. But it would sound a little bit odd that there's that much money in it, but disrupting that ring is not only helpful for the retailers, but helpful for the poor parents that want formula that's working out for them. So, it's been very good. Just another item of note, you know, with the passage of Prop. 36, we are seeing some of that impact right now. As far as our system is concerned, for historical data, Prop. 36 didn't exist yet, so we're now tracking this year, and hopefully by next year, we'll be able to make some comparables of what that looks like for what the Prop. 36 impact is looking like. Anecdotally, you know, speaking with the Sheriff's Department, they're seeing approximately, an increase of approximately thirty suspects a month increase just from Prop. 36 activity. So, that's not necessarily scientific yet, but we're all working on trying to track this as well. But we are seeing a positive input from that. So, with that, entertain any questions that you may have? All right, then, thank you. Have a good night.
Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Go get them, we'll have the booking fees, and we can.
Our next item is city manager items.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, members of the council, Ash Phineen, your City Manager, and I do have a few updates here. Actually, I have several slides. One, it was mentioned earlier, our strategic planning retreat. This is where the city council meets with executive staff to participate in our annual strategic planning retreat, where we talk about putting together a year's worth of strategic objectives to support the three-year goals that are established by the city council. Those are pretty robust meetings with a lot of discussion, and I appreciate the good pre-work that the council's been doing as we work towards that facilitated retreat. It'll be held on Wednesday, March twenty-sixth, starting at eight-thirty AM here at City Hall. And that evening, we won't have the regular meeting, because it's gonna be a pretty full day that day. So, we'll be pretty deep in that retreat, but the good news is we'll come out of it with a work plan for the next year. And it is an open public meeting. Next up is, sometimes when we have projects that are special and there's income qualification requirements, it can be frustrating. I've heard in the past when we don't get the word out enough to get residents in the community that are already here that could benefit from that. So, our team has really taken that to heart and been working closely with Habitat for Humanity for a really unique opportunity at the Citrus Heights Sinai Drive community, where there's gonna be twenty-six homes that'll be constructed. And these are ownership opportunities. There's twenty-six homes that'll be constructed over a three-year period, and the application period is getting close to opening. It'll actually open on April first and run through May twenty-third, so we want to make sure to get the word out. We'll make sure to share with the council this information as well. If you want to get it out on your own Facebook page, it's your own ways that you connect with your constituents. But the first phases will be eight homes starting this summer. And again, this is a sweat equity program where a minimum of five hundred hours are required to put into the purchase of the home as well as other qualifying criteria. So, getting the word out, there's a kickoff meeting on March thirty-first, and that's where people can learn more about that. That'll be right here at the city council chambers from six to eight PM. There's also an April seventh orientation meeting, and this is a mandatory meeting for all applicants, so these things move pretty quick in order for folks to be able to qualify again. That'll be here at City Hall from six to eight PM. There's also some additional dates for application assistance, and so you can see here during that application period, there's three different opportunities, May seventeenth, May nineteenth, and May twenty-first, and then the applications are due Friday, May twenty-third. So, wanting to get the word out far and wide for our residents that are part of the community that could benefit from this, we also have a website page. We're gonna be putting this information up as well on our social media pages and getting the word out. I think we have another slide on this. So, more about the local outreach. So, flyers are being distributed to our Citrus Heights schools, also daycares and churches and community groups, large employers in the community. There's neighborhood area outreach, clubs, utility inserts, so you can see it goes on and on, as well as our electronic outreach. And then there's a QR code here, certainly, if anybody would like to learn more that's here in the audience or watching at home, but we'll make sure that this information is widely available.
Can I ask you a question on this? Go back one slide. So, applications open on April first, so you don't get help in your application till May seventeenth? Or is it just that the smart people can apply, and then the.
We'll go back one more slide.
The ones who are struggling have to wait till May?
The application period opens on April first, if we can go back to the next slide?
Yeah, but.
It closes on May twenty-third. So, the nice thing is, if you, if you are.
Application assistance isn't till mid-May?
I'm sure that with the application, there's gonna be, if you have questions and need some assistance, there'll be the proper contacts. These are formal workshops that are in mid-May, so it's when you're getting very close to submitting. So, these are folks that have probably had some skin in the game for a while, have been getting their answers to questions, and then they're kind of getting their final stretch.
Okay.
In order to get their application submitted. I'm sure there's gonna be plenty of assistance available for them throughout the entire application period.
I see Casey nodding yes, so he says yes. Thank you, Casey.
Another neat activity, actually, I know that Vice Mayor Lopez Taft and Councilmember Schaefer and I were out there last year, but our Citrus Heights Police Activities League was out there this year for the kickoff of opening day for Citrus Heights Little League. So, it was a very successful event and marks our sixty-seventh season, and if you're interested in playing ball, I'm sure they'd love to hear from you. Some upcoming events, so we have the Community Awards Wonder Dinner hosted by the Citrus Heights Chamber. That's tomorrow night. It is a sold-out event, which is terrific. That means we've got a lot of participation in our Citrus Heights Chamber. Sure that our council, many if not all, will be there. Also, Supervisor Rosario Rodriguez is having her community meeting here at Citrus Heights City Hall. This is Monday on St. Patrick's Day, five-thirty PM, so that'll be right here.
Drink some green beer.
There you go. Other upcoming event is the Animal Services Mobile Clinic. This is part of our work with the Bradshaw Animal Shelter. They have a grant-funded mobile vaccination clinic, and that is called their bat clinic. It's coming to Citrus Heights. There's gonna be this vaccination clinic that's gonna be held on March twenty-third from ten to one PM. It's gonna be held at the property that the city recently purchased at seventy-five fifty-five Old Auburn Road. When we're having some of these type of events, we're trying to get those at that property to kind of forecast what type of activities we're gonna be holding out there. It's first come, first served. This one is dogs-only. I understand they do have some vaccination opportunities at their shelter for cats, and the dogs-only is part of their grant.
Is it free?
It is. So, it's free, and they also have microchipping and treatment of minor medical conditions.
And are we licensing at the same time?
We certainly should be, so I'm sure we'll make it so.
Okay.
Big day of service, Saturday, May seventeenth, and this is the first year that Citrus Heights, at least in recent past, has participated in this. So, that is gonna be an exciting opportunity. I know that there's a lot of excitement within the neighborhood areas about this. There's a QR code and information that'll be posted on our website in how you can participate to provide service within your community. We're partnering up with Orangeville, as well as Fair Oaks, that have a pretty active big day of service going on right now, and you can see there's a lot of sponsors behind this. Today, there was a city manager message that went out, and one of the quarterly messages that I put out to the community to talk about things that are happening. This was, you know, kind of a mix on civic engagement matters. We talked about bringing back the, we, I talked about the POP unit coming back. We talked about recent code enforcement survey results that were done. There was also discussion about how you can engage more with the community on flash vote, as well as a number of other items. So, hopefully, people see that message and we continue to get their engagement, because that's how we have good things happen here. And that concludes my updates.
Any questions for our city manager? Okay.
Next item is items requested by council members or future agenda items.
Mayor, I would like to schedule a future discussion on the stipends that council receives for service on boards and commissions and provide, and be provided back to the city for deposit into the general fund.
I second that. I'll second that.
We'll make sure to bring that back.
Thank you.
Anybody else have something?
No.
No? Okay. Other than that, and we do a little council committee on art committee.
Yes, thank you. Yeah, we'll bring that item back as well.
Okay. So, now, that's the end of this agenda, right?
Correct.
We can adjourn to continue our closed session.
Correct.